You know, right? Ah, it's the three musketeers.
I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of August 8th, 2018. Could you all, or could we have a roll call, please?
Thank you. Chair Coats is noted as being absent and Commissioner Abernathy is, has to recuse himself because he lives within 500 feet of the site. So I'll call the roll for the rest. Commissioner McNair?
Here.
Commissioner Cooper?
Here.
And Vice Chair Wilks?
Here. If you could all stand and follow me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we have a big crowd. All right. Yeah. Moving on to public comments. Public comments is an opportunity to address the Planning Commission on items of interest to the public that do not appear on the agenda. Comments should be limited to three minutes. The Commission may not take action on items raised during public comments. Is there anyone here who would like to speak? I see none. I will move on.
Oh, one more.
Oh, we do have one. I'm sorry. Come forward. If you could give your name, please.
Yes. Good afternoon. My name is Sally Hauck. I live at Rancho de Calistoga. I was born and raised in this town and have left for 40 years and now I'm back home. My thought was, well, I didn't really know what the agenda was today, was has the Planning Commission at all thought of putting a moratorium on all new developments and buildings that are planned until we find out what the actual impact of those entities going in, that Silver Rose and the other one, will have on our infrastructure as far as water and sewer is concerned? I initially had thought about the merchant proposal that he had and maybe the Yellow Rose, but I would wondering if that moratorium has crossed your mind at all or would you consider it? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Moving on. Oh, I'm sorry. Boy, you're all back, you're all back in the corner. I can't see you.
You're going a little too fast. My name is Donna Higgins. I live on Fourth Street. And this is a non-agenda item. I'm going to speak about the project that was approved at the July 11th, 2018 meeting, item DR 2018R2, the high-density multifamily complex for 1514 Washington Street. During the PowerPoint presentation, the adjacent 1406 Stanmore Home was replaced by a grass expanse. The proximity of the two-story complex to this family residence was eliminated, giving a distorted view of how the project will impact neighborhood. Set on the property line which backs up to the Stanmore's bedrooms is a single-car driveway that will be used for incoming and outgoing cars. The driveway to this complex must also be used as a pedestrian walkway for renters to access their front doors. A pathway as specified in Section H of the R-3 code is not included in the plans. A variance needs to be issued. No viewing poles were erected to help neighbors visualize height or depth of the massive project. There is no designated separate bicycle parking as required by R-3 code. Variance needs to be issued. And let's talk about the parking and traffic problems on Fourth Street, which will be magnified by this project. Fourth Street is 24 feet curb to curb, and now a de facto one-way street where two vehicles moving in opposite directions cannot safely pass one another. Adding the one-way-in, one-way-out driveway will further aggravate the problem. Tuesday of this week, I witnessed a truck leaving the subject property and having to drive over the curb to exit onto Fourth Street to avoid hitting a parked car. We are much narrower than First Street, Third Street, and many other neighborhood streets in Calistoga. Entering the Washington Street corridor is already a traffic and pedestrian safety issue with the pitch of the street and the parking on the east side of Washington. More importantly, the Washington Fourth Street area is a direct pedestrian route for many elementary and high school students. We want to keep this a safe walking area. No additional auto traffic to this already congested, risky area cannot be accepted. The project is too large for the existing neighborhood. To place four large living units on a medium-sized, single-family lot is excessive. Can't a small, smaller complex be provided here on Fourth Street? Does the complex have to be so dense as to destroy a small neighborhood? The mission statement of Calistoga is being overlooked in favor of the invasion of this maximum-high-density project in an area containing one of the few remaining older side streets of Calistoga. The erosion of these longstanding neighborhoods should not be allowed. These small, irreplaceable neighborhoods should be protected and preserved to keep Calistoga unique. Walk the street, view the area, and join the appeal at the August 21st City Council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on, Dawn, if you could wait one minute. Lynn, there was a couple of points there that came up that I think that if they're noted to the applicant can be picked up in their construction documents.
Thank you. We have a copy of Ms. Higgins' letter.
Okay.
We passed it on to the applicant.
Person. Perfect. Dawn.
Donald Williams on View Road. I thank you, Commissioners. I want to thank you. I do appreciate at the end of your last meeting, you acknowledged how important it is to identify a ceiling or a saturation point regarding traffic and lodging and water usage and so on. I got interested in this topic in recent years, dealing with crazy traffic like most of us do, and then watching credulously as the county proceeded to approve more and more event centers and winery visitors without regard to the overall effect of those projects on our way of life. I realized that could happen here, too. One thing leads to another and I end up running for City Council. But now I just want to reiterate my remarks from the last two meetings, how important it is to put on the agenda and discern just what is Calistoga's carrying capacity, what can we accommodate, considering our geographic constraints and our social and emotional well-being. Taking projects one by one as they come along isn't going to work. They all claim their impact is less than significant. Tonight's Loop proposal is one more example of that. That less-than-significant designation is meaningless. It's the cumulative effect of these projects that counts. Few more cars here, a few more there, and you can't keep blowing smoke into a balloon and hope it's never going to burst. An approach to planning which is comprehensive, not piecemeal, will take cumulative effect into account. Last week, I met with my neighbor across the street, actually, my neighbor's representative. He has three acres on the north end of Lincoln, and he's thinking to build an 85-room hotel there. Eighty-five rooms. And then there's Veranda and Yellow Rose and Loop, and who knows about the fairgrounds and the effects of the two mega resorts? Nobody knows. That's why it's so important to put a hold on projects till we do know what is our carrying capacity. I think the topic needs to be front and center, and I'm pretty sure it's not going to go away. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, that I haven't seen. We will move on to the adoption of the agenda. Does anyone like to make a motion?
I move that we adopt the meeting agenda.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. Moving on. Communications and correspondence. Lynn?
Since the distribution of your packet last week, we received a letter from Lawrence Butler, who is the owner of the Arco Station, and it's addressed to the Planning Department, but I provided you with copies related to the public hearing for tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Consent calendar. Is there, if there's no typos found, is, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. Public hearings. We have only just one public hearing tonight, and before we start, I'd like to sort of explain, we're going to have a little bit of some different ground rules. It is clear that everyone is here to talk about that because there's nothing else on the agenda. We're not going to take any action specifically tonight. There, in the staff report that we have, which is unusual from our normal process, there is neither a recommendation for approval nor a recommendation for denial or a recommendation for anything else. And so what our purpose will be tonight will be to hear the applicant's presentation and information and hear the staff report and traffic and everything else that is involved in this project. And we will then have public testimony, where you will all have an opportunity to speak. After we close that public hearing, we will then have the ability to discuss it up here, and I will poll the Commission to see if we can find a consensus so that when we continue the hearing, we can continue the hearing with a recommendation to staff to either prepare, to prepare a resolution for approval or a resolution for denial or a, or instructions that would permit her to go back to the applicant to, for some sort of redesign or whatever. So just so everyone knows, that will be the case. There won't be any decisions made tonight, but we will hear everything tonight. So, having said that, the application before us is Gas Station Use Permit UP 2017-11 and Design Review DR 2017-13. Consideration of a Use Permit and Design Review Applications for the Construction of a Service Station, Convenience Store, Self-Service Car Wash, and Sit-Down Restaurant at 2449 Foothill Boulevard. If the applicant or their representatives?
I'm going to go first.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, of course.
I'm going to do a quick staff report and then we'll turn it over to the applicant. I'm just going to give a brief project overview and then they can get into the details as you like. So as I think everybody knows, the 1.6 acre project site is located at the southwest corner of Foothill Boulevard and Petrified Forest Road. It's currently occupied by Calistoga Towing Company and Auto Repair and U-Haul Truck Rental Businesses. Don't get too carried away, Mike. So just briefly, proposed new facilities would include a gas station, which below a fuel dispensing canopy would be five multiproduct fuel dispensers, a convenience store of approximately 3,200 square feet, 1,000-gallon propane tank and dispenser for propane sales, a self-service drive-through car wash, and approximately 2,800-square-foot restaurant. The operator at this point has not been determined, but would include approximately 112 seats for patrons based on the floor area. In terms of site operations, the gas station and convenience store are proposed to be operational 24 hours a day. The car wash is proposed to operate daily from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and the restaurant is projected to be open daily between 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Of course, that could change depending on who the ultimate tenant is in the building. The project site would be accessed via two new 35-foot-wide driveways, one located on Petrified Forest Road directly opposite the southernmost Arco driveway, and one on Foothill Boulevard. Concrete sidewalks, curbs, and gutters would be installed along both project frontages. A 17-foot swath of right-of-way would be dedicated on Foothill Boulevard and 48-foot wide right-of-way on Petrified Forest Road. The preliminary planting plan would preserve 10 of the 13 onsite trees and add 41 ornamental trees. The project site is designated by the General Plan's Land Use Map as community commercial, which allows restaurant uses, service commercial uses, basically, and retail uses if they are in conformance to all relevant general plan policies, with the exception of retail, which isn't included in that group. The project site is also subject to the Petrified Forest Gateway Character Area Overlay at the intersection of Petrified Forest and Foothill Boulevard. This gateway is described in the land use element as a country crossroads, and notes that this intersection primarily serves commute traffic between Lake Napa and Sonoma Counties. Just a couple highlights of the lengthy description of land use considerations, development and design considerations, connectivity considerations that are included in that gateway character area is that formula chain businesses are discouraged, and commercial uses should primarily serve the commuter traveler. However, uses that also serve nearby residents but do not compete with downtown businesses may also be allowed. Your staff report includes all of the relevant considerations I could find. The project site is also located within the Up Valley Foothill Boulevard Entry Corridor. So entry corridor overlays are intended to enhance Calistoga's small-town rural character by interweaving elements of the natural and built environment between primarily agricultural lands in the county and developed lands in the city. And also, the project site is located within a scenic resource corridor as designated in the General Plan's Open Space and Conservation Element. So what I tried to do in the staff report is briefly summarize how the project is consistent with the various applicable general plan designations and various overlays and other policies. In terms of consistency, the proposed commercial uses would primarily serve the commuter traveler, which is what is called for, and the proposed car wash would serve residents but not compete with downtown businesses as we have no car wash. Also, the dedication of significant areas of public right-of-way on both project frontages would facilitate needed intersection improvements. There are also a few inconsistencies highlighted. Obviously, these are open to interpretation. They're kind of guidelines and shoulds and encourages and discourages, but one of them is that although the proposed board and batten and stone finish materials would reflect the community's agrarian setting, the proposed complex itself would not convey a sense of arrival and signify the characteristics of a unique, small, visitor-friendly town, which is one of the policies. The gas station and convenience store constitute formula businesses, which are discouraged in entry corridors, and the site plan as proposed would conflict with the guideline of providing wide setbacks in order to preserve rural characteristics. There's also a portion of the staff report that discusses the formula business policies, which you are very familiar with at this point. In case you didn't know, the City Council did approve the formula business last night with the agreement that there would be no corporate logos or signage for the business. It would strictly be a generic signage. So generally, the land use element prohibits formula businesses unless they primarily meet local residents and business owner needs. They can be allowed under circum, certain circumstances, as I just mentioned, if they don't have common design elements found in other communities. In terms of the zoning code compliance, I've included a table with all the development standards, and it does meet all of these standards in terms of setbacks, lot coverage, building height, a number of stories. In terms of zoning codes, parking requirements, the project is deficient by three parking spaces, and it doesn't appear that there is an opportunity to easily add these spaces to the site. There are a couple of approaches that could be taken to address this deficiency. For example, the Commission could determine that since many of the customers purchasing gas would also patronize the convenience store, the overall parking demand would be reduced. Another alternative would be to meet this deficiency by reducing the size of the proposed restaurant in order to lower its parking demand. Staff also has a concern about the proposed distribution of the parking spaces. Although 28 spaces would be required for the restaurant, only 19 spaces are proposed immediately adjacent to the restaurant itself. And we also have some concern over the seven parallel parking spaces that are proposed kind of along the corner frontage of the site, which is in a curved area, which could be difficult to access, and they won't be screened because the adjacent landscape planter is planted, is proposed to be planted with ground cover. So there really isn't an ability to screen those cars if they're, if they are parked there, which is called for by some of the general plan policies. And then just briefly for environmental review, an initial study was prepared to identify potential environmental impacts. It identified potentially significant impacts in the areas of aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology, water quality, and noise and transportation and traffic. Just briefly touching on two of the subjects, the noise impacts were related primarily to the car wash operations and mechanical equipment that could be associated with the project. And in terms of traffic, the project is anticipated to generate a net increase of 91 trips during the morning peak hour and 94 during the afternoon peak hour. Mitigation measures were agreed to by the applicant as contained in the mitigation monitoring and reporting program that you have, and since these have been agreed to, they would avoid the effects or mitigate the effects to a point where clearly no significant effect would occur. So we are recommending approval of a mitigated negative declaration on that basis. The draft MND was circulated for the mandated 30-day review period. We received comments, and M Group, who proposed, who prepared the MND, has responded to those. You have those in your packet as well. After reviewing the comments, there was no requirement that we had to revise the MND and recirculate it, or that we would need to prepare an environmental impact report. So on that basis, we're recommending that the Planning Commission, if it chooses to, if it eventually approves the project, that they also adopt the MND. And Olivia Irvin is here tonight from M Group, and also Steve Weinberg from W Trans, the traffic consultant, if questions arise. And so in terms of required findings, those are outlined in your staff report. As you know, you need to make, between the use permit and the design review applications, you need to make six findings. Just a couple highlights, you have to find that it's in accord with the general plan, with the zoning code, that it won't impair or interfere with the development, use, or enjoyment of other property in the vicinity or the area, that it's consistent with and enhances Calistoga's history of independently-owned businesses, and that it's resident-serving in the case of a formula business. In terms of public comments, we did receive a petition with 131 signatures that had concerns about the project. You have that in your packet, as well as letters from, well, with this letter tonight will be six individuals expressing concerns about the project. So staff is recommending, as you noted, that you receive presentation from staff, the applicant, ask questions of either us or them, or also the environmental consultants, open the public hearing, receive public comments and questions. I would ask that all questions be directed to the Vice Chair, and we'll keep a summary of those and then respond to them. We'll divvy up the questions as necessary so that, you know, we don't get into a Q&amp;A during the public hearing. So we'll respond to any questions or comments, close the public hearing, and then provide comments on the project and select one of the options outlined below, which, as you stated, would be to continue the item to a subsequent meeting and request additional information or revisions to the project, direct staff to draft resolutions for approval of the project's mitigated negative declaration on the project, direct staff, or direct staff to draft a resolution denying the project, or take other appropriate action. So with that, unless you have any questions for me?
Any questions?
Okay.
Yep.
So we'll turn it over to the applicant?
Okay, yeah. Does anyone have any questions for, right now, for Mike Kern, the environmental? We'll move on. All right. If the applicant is here, or their representatives, the floor is yours.
Hello. Good evening, Commissioners Cooper and McNair and Vice Chair Wilks. Thank you for having us here and giving us an opportunity to speak about the project. AU Energy is the applicant on the project, which is the company that I'm here on behalf of. Our architect is also here as well, and so I think he's going to go through some of the, some of the particulars on the site plan and the layout and things of that nature. I'm really just here to give some background on our company and what we think that we can do on this location. So AU Energy is a family-owned and run-
I'm getting some motions in the back. Can you speak up a little bit?
Oh, sure. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll try to stay as close to this as possible. So AU Energy is a family-owned and operated gas station company. So I'm a member of that family. I'm second generation. It was started by my father about 38 years ago or so. He had actually immigrated from India in 1969, attended the University of Washington, worked for a while at Bechtel, and then created sort of this side business, which became his permanent business, and that is to operate gas stations. So we have grown steadily since then, and now we own and operate sites all throughout Northern California. AU Energy in particular was created in 2010. We have about 30 Loop stores. Loop is the C-store brand, so it's not the Fuel brand. Our Fuel is still Shell-branded, and we do that because we think that there are sort of good synergies there with premium offerings. But we created the brand ourselves in 2013, and so we've tried to expand that to different locations in our existing network. So a couple of things, maybe just to point out here. The Loop store is a part of the gas station, but it's, it's very different, I think, than what people are accustomed to seeing for a convenience store. A lot of times, we go into a small gas station and we see sort of maybe a dirty or unkempt C-store, and, and that's not the, that's not the look and feel of our stores at all. They're intended to be well-lit, open-air coolers, more accessible, and more geared towards the community that they're in. Many of the offerings that we give are, are healthy-based, in addition to the normal stuff that you'd see at a C-store. Any tobacco that's sold there is considered dark. It's not front and center. You'd have to ask for it in order to actually get, you know, a pack of cigarettes, for instance. So it's very, it's very different. The flow is different. It's staffed by a lot more people than you normally see in a convenience store. And we can talk about it more maybe in detail as we go through the slide, the slides. Oh, great. Thank you. So that's sort of what the interior of the store looks like. You can see the open-air coolers, a lot of grab-and-go items, a lot of fresh items. The exterior of the store, that's actually the exterior of one of our stores in Napa. And the reason I wanted to show that is, is I saw some concerns that the exterior looks very like mechanical and, and very metal-oriented, and that's just one location, perhaps. Our, our locations are designed to really fit into the community and abide by the regulations and, and design requirements of this specific city. And Calistoga would be no different in that scenario. It'd be a very agrarian, agricultural look to it, which I think are reflected in the, in the, in the site plan and the elevations. Okay, so on the, on the size of the company, yes, I, I do want to point out that there are about 118 locations. are about 118 locations total, but 30 of those are Loop Stores, which is sort of, I think, what we, what we are putting in here. Specifically, the Loop Store isn't meant for every market. Footprint of, of store is, is a big determinant of that. We need at least 2,800 square feet to make that work, which is why the C store here is at least 2,800 square feet as well, and that's why there are only 30 of them. Regarding the healthy options, so the Partnership for Healthy America was an initiative started by First Lady Michelle Obama back during their first, during the first term. And we were the first convenience store in California to partner with them. Basically, you have to abide by a set of regulations and meet a minimum requirement of the number of healthy options that are offered in your store. And the reason we wanted to show that is because, again, it's very different from the normal convenience store, right? You won't normally see a lot of healthy sandwiches, low-calorie foods, milk in lieu of, you know, all the sugary drinks you can think of, things of that nature. You'd have to have that in place in order to qualify for entry to the PHA. And so we think that's something to highlight, that differentiates us from the Arco's and the 7-Elevens of the world. Regarding the whole recognition piece, so it's not an award for the biggest convenience store, the most flashy convenience store. It's really just an award for cleanliness, design, and innovation. And that's not common for our industry. So again, we wanted to highlight that because I know there's a lot of concern in the community about sort of a negative element, and also of the typical C store that you see when you go to a gas station on the side of the freeway. The last thing I'd point out is the, is the car wash. There was some concern in some of the letters I'd seen about full-service car washes. We are, are not a full-service car wash at all. It's completely self-service. It's automatic. Once you get your code and you input it into the, into the machine, you get to drive in and your vehicle is washed. These are also the most efficient ways of washing your vehicle because of the reclamation system that you put in. You end up only using a few gallons of actual water during the wash cycle. The rest of it is recycled. So I wanted to point out some of the concerns about the negative element and the Arco. So a couple of things, we take customer and employee safety really, really seriously. And some of the highlights are, our cameras are all high-definition, they're continuously recording, and they have about 45 days of video. Obviously, that's a deterrent that many gas stations have, and so we try to go above and beyond that with a couple of other things. One is, is our properties are really well-lit. They're specifically designed to only shoot light down and not out of the property, and it's designed to make sure that there's no area of the property, building-wise, canopy, building, and car wash that would appear dark and, and be sort of a, an attractive nuisance, so to speak. So the security robot, okay, I wanted to point that out because, so we, what we've been trying to do is, is trying to keep, how do we go beyond sort of the normal customer safety and employee safety? So what we've trialed at two locations are a security robot. It's a company in Mountain View called Night Scope, and we've been working with them for about six months on two locations. It's a egg-shaped robot that you might see at, at your local mall, because I've seen them there too. And it's five feet tall. They vary in weight. They can be like 300 or 400 pounds. They have cameras all around them. They don't really interact with you at all. What, what they do is, is they're a deterrent, and we found them to be very useful in deterring loitering and, and people coming to the property to potentially engage in, you know, improper activity. There are many features of these robot, of these robots that we don't use yet, just because we, we, we are only been rolling it out now for six months. Some of those things are, they have the ability to identify, like, somebody who's, who's loitering by the RFID or the cellphone. What we've found is many homeless people in other areas have cellphones, and so you can identify them that way. Also facial recognition and license plate reading. We haven't rolled any of that out yet, but those are options that are there to try to increase safety of the, of the store. What we've found is, is that it has greatly reduced the loitering and nuisance issues at those two stores, and so we think it's really promising. And it's something that we highlight because we're continuously thinking about customer safety and employee safety. Now at night, the overnight shift is, is the time when our team members or employees at the store are sort of resetting it for the day. So it's, it's really helpful when we're open because we're able to clean the store, restock it, and get it ready for the next day. But having them there is actually really helpful because they're still a pair of eyes to potentially be a deterrent to anybody coming into a store that would otherwise say, "Be closed." Real quickly on the store services, I, we wanted to highlight this, I wanted to highlight this because, again, it's not your normal convenience store. A lot of convenience stores don't produce lattes for you. There's not frozen yogurt, frozen yogurt or fresh produce in the manner of bananas, apples, sometimes seasonally kiwis, things of that nature. It's not a big set. It's maybe only this, this podium and maybe 50% more, but grab-and-go items that you wouldn't typically see, and so I wanted to highlight that. There was a concern that we were a truck stop, and I wanted to dispel that fear right away. We have never had a truck stop or operated one. Our pumps aren't even fast enough to, to pump that type of fuel. They're really meant for our everyday commuter vehicles, the light-duty vehicles that you and I drive to work, our Ford F-150s, our sedans, things like that. So there's no way this could ever be a truck stop. I mentioned the, the automatic car wash and the water recycling feature and sort of, it's, it's sort of green nature. And just overall, our, our offer is really different. There was a comparison to the Arco. Arco is considered a, a low-cost fuel, and Shell is considered a premium fuel. It's also why we, we've worked with them so well and kind of made our C store to be partnered or on Shell-branded sites. The difference in fuel price is about 20 cents per gallon between an Arco and a Shell. They're about 20 cents lower, and of course, their convenience stores differ store to store, I think. I also wanted to just point out some of the compliance and regulatory items that we take great care to make sure that we are on top of. All underground storage tanks are double-walled, including all of the piping, and they're continuously monitored 24 hours a day, seven days a week, by a network of sensors, that alarm if there's any, you know, if any sort of one of the parameters is, is met. So to give you an example, you know, imagine like a double-hulled ship, I guess, with an inner hull and an outer hull, and a liquid in between the two, and that liquid is monitored for its pH change, if there was ever a primary containment failure, you'd know right away, and you'd be able to fix it, and nothing, no product would actually get into the environment. That's not, I mean, to be honest, I'd love to say that we only do that. That's, that's sort of required by the state. That's not something that we do separately above and beyond, but all of our tanks are double-walled, and this site would be no different. The bars program was something I just wanted to highlight. So we use bars. It's a third-party program that comes to our store on its own anonymously. We don't know when they're coming. They do it a few times every quarter, and they try to purchase tobacco underage. And if our employee fails, then we're written up, and we obviously have to take appropriate action with our employee. But it's a way for us to just sort of make sure that we're not thinking we're doing a great job, but we actually are making an effort to comply with any age-restricted transactions. And so I bring that up just because I, I want to point out how, how seriously we take just our interaction with the community. Employee benefits, the 401K, the health insurance, dental and vision, the group life and accident, not, not so much an issue for our employees, but the first three certainly are. And our average rate, it increases every year, but it's just under $15 an hour. So we think we're really, really competitive for our, for our industry. You don't typically see rates that are much higher than, than minimum wage, and we tend to track far above that, just because we think it leads to a better product in our So, community philanthropy, I mean, I, I wanted to point this out. This is different for, for each area that we've found ourselves in. But what we do is, is every month we have a new cause or charity that we partner with. In September, it is, I believe it's the California Fire Foundation. That's right. In November, it's the Marin County Food Bank, and then in December, it's the Bay Area Sheriff's Charitable Foundation. And what we do is, is we basically pledge a certain portion of inside store sales, just to make sure that, that, that there's a minimum amount that we can donate. And we've found it to just be a really nice way to give back. It doesn't necessarily, and we know it's not changing the world right away, but it's our way of giving back to our local communities. And so I pointed out the, the Marin County Food Bank, LGBT is in San Francisco. That's where we're partnered with them. But the Marin County Food Bank is obviously Marin County. California Fire Foundation is Napa and Sonoma Counties, and I think that's especially pertinent just now, but the one thing I, the, the last note there is the North Bay Fires in 2017. One thing we found that we didn't know, so a lot of stuff was happening at that time in Sonoma, Napa Counties. A lot of our stores were shut down due to the, just, just the incredible nature of the disaster. But we had people come from other areas, staff them, keep them open. A lot of our customers were really happy that they were just a place with power and that was offering fuel and basic items. We are a C store. We're not, we're not a safe way, so we can't provide everything. But I think our interaction with the community really opened our eyes during that moment when we realized we were open. You know, we made sure that the ATM, for instance, we, we partnered with the ATM firm right away to waive all fees for that three-week period. And people were just able to come in and, for emergency provisions, and I think it was just a great opportunity for us to interact with our community in a meaningful way. And we know we're here and can be here in the event of a disaster to assist it anyway. So the, the store architecture, I'll leave that to the architect to really get into a deep dive, but it's designed to be scaled to the community. And we try to work as hard as we can, Commissioners, with the planning director and the planning department, to make sure that we do fit the community, both in height and also in the actual design of the building itself. And so we think that this is designed to fit Calistoga's architecture and, and, and fit in with the community and not be too obtrusive or sticking out in any way. A couple of items in conclusion, I know right now the site doesn't look so great. It's, I think it's a wrecking yard and towing yard. And we think that we have a good plan in place to try to make it better and make that, that, that intersection better. We are dedicating a significant portion of the land to signalize the intersection as well, and hopefully that can help with facilitating traffic and moving cars through the intersection in a way that it can't now. And regarding the restaurant, I think there was some concern about the size and scale of that. That's something that we can work on, and if necessary, we can absolutely commit to it being not only smaller, not only being done at a later time, but also commit to it being a local, we're open to ideas, making it, you know, making sure that it's a local operator of a restaurant, wine tasting room showcasing Calistoga wines. I mean, we're open to that. The restaurant piece, I know, caused some angst and concern, and I just want to let you guys know that we, we can work with the commissioner, or the planning commissioner on that, and planning director, excuse me, and the whole planning department, to make sure that that fits the neighborhood in a way that I think makes them at ease. Lastly, I wanted to thank you for your time. We're excited about the project. We're excited about coming into this corner and being a part of the community. So thank you very much, and I can answer any questions now, I can answer them later, whatever you need.
Do any of the Commissioners have any questions?
Yep.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Muthana Ibrahim. I'm with Amway Architects Inc. I'm the architect for this project, and I'm gonna go through the design of the project, going through the plans. I'll start with the site survey. There is three structures on the site will be removed to construct the project. Okay, sure. Okay, this is the proposed site plan. The Shell gas station consists of a canopy with five dispensers. The canopy is located at the corner. Convenience store, 32,000 square feet, and a car wash tunnel-
32.
32, I'm sorry. 3,200 square feet, I'm sorry. And a car wash tunnel behind the car wash, I'm sorry, behind the convenience store. And the drive-through for the car wash situated behind the car wash tunnel to the south of the convenience store. The exit of the car wash facing Foothill Boulevard and circulate the cars into the site. The sit-down restaurant is located at the south portion of the property. The onsite improvement include plaza and sit-down area by the, by the restaurant with a tour less, include an accessible path of travel that connect both frontages, street frontages with the restaurant and the convenience store. Onsite parking, landscape, new trees and shrubs and ground, ground floor, ground cover, I'm sorry. We're proposing 1,000 gallon propane tank, two thrash enclosures, EV charging station. The onsite improvement include widening the street, sidewalk, new sidewalk, carbon gutter, and two driveways, one on each frontage. The grading design is based on two studies. One is a storm control plan, and the other one is a drainage study. And the site is divided into five drainage area. Each drainage area will be directed to, sorry, to a, oops. I lost the picture for some reason. Okay, so the site is divided into five drainage area. Each drainage area directed toward a bioplanter to treat the rainwater before discharges into the public system. The site design also include a detention system, systems that has enough storage for water to control the peak flow discharge to the public system, and that's designed for the 100-year store. The thrash enclosure is a CMU with metal gate and metal roof. Okay, the architecture of the building is a farm-like design commonly found in Napa County and the surrounding area, and the color and the material proposed are native to this area. We're proposing a standing seam roof, metal roof, hip-type, and a gable. The body of the building covered with board and batten, fiber cement, non-combustible material. The entry is identified with posts and beams, Raffsan material. Also- The entry is identified with posts and beams, rafsan material, also with a gable. We're using dormers to give it the agricultural look of the building. The windows are dark anodized with insulated glass and metal awning to give it enough shading. The store architecture is similar. The entry is identified with a tower that is finished with stone veneer, clear story light at the top with metal awning to give it enough shade. The base of the wall is finished with stone veneer, and the color are similar to the restaurant. The outdoor seating area provided with trolleys, the trolleys material are from redwood, finished with clear color. The canopy, fuel canopy does not include the shell image, which is the yellow and the red bands. The columns are provided with pilaster that reflect the design of the building, which is the board and batten on the column and the stone veneer at the bottom. With that, I conclude my presentation. If you have any question for me.
Commissioners have any questions?
Not yet, but hold on.
Okay, we would like to reserve, we may have questions later on, so if that's the case, we'll call you back. Before we open for the public hearing for public testimony, for those people who came in late and wish to speak, we're using speaker cards tonight, and so if you did not fill one out, if you could do so now, and bring it up to Lynn, and that will help us. If there is no one intending to speak other than, that is on this card, then I'm inclined not to do a time limit, per se. Well, I have, our esteemed former chairman is in the back, and he and I talked on the phone, and he suggested we do four minutes. So, that's what we're gonna do. The other thing I will remind you of is that if you, if someone has already spoken in an area of content that is what you wanted to talk about, you might want to just give your time to someone else. So, having said that, the first card I have is Jennifer Bennett.
Good evening, commissioners and neighbors. Our community has actually met to discuss the Loop development at length.
No, I know.
And we've decided that you don't need to be inundated with repetitive commentary. That's part of the reason you don't have a huge stack up there. So, tonight, only a few of us will speak. However, at this time, I'd like to ask the people that are here in opposition to the project to stand and be recognized. Active participation in our government is an important part of living in a small town like Calistoga, and I'm proud to have these neighbors by my side. Thank you. My name is Jennifer Bennett. I've lived at 973 Petrified Forest Road, just past the Arco Station, for over 10 years. I also own and maintain the bit of land that abuts their parking lot, and therefore have the unfortunate knowledge of the destructive behavior of some of their clientele. In addition to the usual trash, I regularly need to clean up used needles, toilet paper, and bedding from the tree line and from Cyrus Creek. I have called the police countless times to report domestic abuse, drug deals, camping, aggressive dogs off-leash, and even an unwise campfire in the tree line that separates my property from the Arco. I know that this meeting is not about the Arco Station. However, a larger, even less manageable complex at that corner is very concerning. The proposed Loop Station would exacerbate the transient issues that the Arco already allows. At least the Arco closes at midnight. The proposed Loop Station would operate 24 hours a day, increasing the likelihood of nefarious behavior and illegal activity. I personally don't want to live in a neighborhood that requires a security robot. I doubt that you live anywhere near one. I know that this meeting, sorry, I was already there, got excited. The Yelp reviews for the Loop Station in Nashville, or Nashville, that's where I'm from, in Napa are horrifying. 16 of the 19 are one-star, and the complaints echo all of my issues with the Arco. Disinterested employees and management, filthy parking lots and bathrooms, shady characters and dealings. Loop is a massive corporation of 124 formulaic strip retail stores with no responsibility or commitment to their neighbors. Our rural neighborhood is not an interstate off-ramp. It is a gateway to historic Calistoga, and I ask that our planning commission deny this and all formulaic applications to build on that land. It could be so many things: a farmer's market, a wine barrel furniture store, a welcome center for the town, businesses that would represent the heart of our community and benefit visitors and locals alike. As a local business owner, property owner, voter, and taxpayer, I thank you for your attention to this matter and look forward to development proposals in the future that will reflect our town's unique charm and grace.
Lucretia Marcus.
My name is Lucretia Marcus. I live at 933 Petrified Forest, right down the street from Jen. Unlike a lot of the people here, we've only lived here for two years. We moved in in December 2016, just in time for the 100-year rain cycle and the fire. And I'm looking now at maybe the third strike of being, building Loop. I was lucky enough to get my hands on the document called the Urban Design Plan that was approved by the city council in 2010. We recognize the fact that what is currently at that corner had to be grandfathered in because they were there many years before the UDT was approved. However, going forward, we really, we should be considering just what exactly is in that plan, and that is to maintain the rural characteristics of a lovely community. We escaped from a community in eastern Contra Costa County, moving here. We originally moved to that community because it was small, because it had very similar characteristics to Calistoga. And then they built, and built, and built, and built. And what used to take me three minutes to get to downtown Wall in the Creek took me half an hour. What we see happening here is exactly the same thing. The traffic currently there is horrendous, and one of our folks is going to address that. My job is to point out that the Urban Design Plan certainly did not address itself to a formulaic project such as this, which looks in some ways a lot like a strip mall. As I understand it, a Rite Aid was denied for right in that area because it is a chain. I don't see how you get away from that with this, with the Loop. This is the gateway to Calistoga from three counties. It's the only one that brings in people from different counties to us. We shouldn't have to drive in from Healdsburg, or drive in from Middletown, or drive in from Santa Rosa, and the first thing that you see in Calistoga is a gas station. And not just a gas station, but one of 30 of this plan and one of over 100 that the same company has all over California. What we need and what has been conveyed in the UDT is that we should be conveying a sense of arrival. I'm not sure that, what we tell people coming in here with a gas station on that corner, I'm not sure what kind of an arrival that that gives to them. It's supposed to enhance circulation. Well, that corner, and I can see it from where we live, that corner is awful during the day. The fact that the mitigated plan mentioned that the additional traffic, it would be insignificant, is not right. I don't know what hours they looked at it, or whether or not they averaged it out into a 24-hour time cycle. Let me tell you, from 6:00 in the morning until 9:00 in the morning, from 5:00 in the afternoon till 7:00 in the evening, you cannot move there. Three times last week, I almost got rear-ended. At the first entrance to the Arco Station, I had made the left to go on to Petrified Forest to get home. Somebody in front of me slammed on their brakes to make that left-hand turn. The guy behind me wasn't looking, and it was really nice that there was a little section that he could move to that I didn't get rear-ended. Three times that happened.
You're, yes, if you could wrap it up.
In closing, I just wish that we could keep the image, and it's not really an image, it's how we live, and something that it took my husband and I 10 years to find. And I urge you, please, not to approve this project in any way, shape, or form. There's lots of other things that can be done. Thank you.
So many councils, so little time.
Thank you for being on the commission, by the way. On June 12th of this year, TripAdvisor named the 10 most blissful destinations for wellness in travel. Park City, Utah, Ojai, Calistoga, California, and seven more. Congratulations, Calistoga. Interesting to note that all 10 of these special wellness travel places have a formula business ordinance. Regarding the application for a convenience store, gas station here, you need to look at, in terms of formula business, does the proposed business provide needed services to locals or visitors? Well, in addition to what we already have, no, all the services are already provided. Does acceptance, this is a formula business, okay? There is a formula ordinance, and there's a reason for it. There are already gas stations, there is a convenience store, there's actually already a restaurant across the street, and these are very close proximity. There will always be a business that wants an exception to, of a city's formula business. The nature of the situation reminds me of a quote by Aesop: "Beware lest you lose the substance by grasping at thy shadow." The city has a safe precedence in following such a formula business, as was seen in California Appeals Court decision regarding formula business ordinance in 2003. The court ruled that the ordinance does not violate the U.S. Constitution Commerce and Equal Protection clauses, and is a valid use of municipal authority under California state law. I encourage the commission to turn down this application because it is not consistent with the future of Calistoga. Thank you.
Was one of those right? Is that what you were gonna speak about?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right. Kim Stevenson? Is it Kim? Is Kim here? Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Just come up to the microphone, dear.
Thank you, sir. Okay, my name is Kim Sinirm. I was blessed with that a long time ago. I live at 2333 Foothill Boulevard, and that doesn't mean much to you, except for, I live right across the creek from the present Arco Station. I can literally throw a rock across the creek into their parking lot. So, I get firsthand knowledge of noise, pollution, bad behavior, bites, the whole works. I've lived at that residence since 1998. I am a 30-year veteran of the City of Napa Fire Department, retired as a captain, and a member of the hazardous materials response team for the county of Napa. So, I have some experience in looking at different situations and appraising what's going on. I've been asked to talk about the traffic in this area. This intersection of 128 and Petrified Forest handles more traffic than any other intersection in this city. It is the primary commute corridor from Lake County and upper Napa Valley over to Santa Rosa. We've already addressed the fact that the traffic peaks twice a day, and during those times, it's not uncommon to have traffic at stop-and-go conditions up Petrified Forest to the county line, down Foothill to Berry Street, and up Foothill or 128 past the vet clinic. This creates gridlock every day. People cannot even enter or leave that service station without risking getting run into, like Lucretia just spoke to. For those of us who have access off of Petrified Forest or Foothill Boulevard, we can't even enter or leave our driveways at certain times a day. It also causes extreme frustration to those people trying to commute through that intersection. This results in some very aggressive behavior. The blaring of horns, the shouted insults, and the F-bomb are daily occurrences. Believe me, I hear it. Noise levels are already high with that present Arco gas station. My wife and I are blessed with about four hours of fairly quiet time right now with their operation hours, because there is a tanker that comes in at about 4:00 a.m., fills up the fuel tanks, and then there's the garbage truck. It is just unbelievable when it dumps the dumpster. We also experienced drivers coming up the valley, driving on the shoulder of Foothill, coming up to the intersection, passing illegally on the right, only to have them turn right into the entrance of Rancho de Calistoga where they make a U-turn, and then cross onto Petrified Forest Road. And this compounds the traffic situation. We, the residents of that area, have also experienced drivers driving into our front yards, trying to use our private driveways to get around that traffic. We see this on a regular basis. To even consider allowing this development to go forward without conducting and implementing an improved traffic plan must not be allowed. I'd like to stress the issue that this is not just a City of Calistoga issue, it is also a State of California issue. Highway 128, a traffic plan has to be done jointly with them before any other development should take place in that area. We may need to take out a whole bunch more land to allow the traffic to flow freely. On a side note, on a hazardous materials response, educated person, has anybody ever addressed the in-ground fuel tanks that were at that service station, just at the wrecking yard right now? Are they still in the ground? Are they still leaching into the soil? And what about the cleanup of the wrecking yard itself? I don't think those have been identified, and they should be. I would like to thank all of you guys for being our first line of defense against developments that may not fit in the City of Calistoga. that may not fit in the City of Calistoga. Thank you.
Thank you for having me on the award committee. Well, I was going to talk about all the things that have already been talked about, except for one thing that I want to emphasize, and everybody here is emphasizing, the traffic. I live at the Rancho, the Calistoga, I've been there for 16 years. I have much experience getting in and out of that Rancho driveway to get across that intersection. The people coming from the Petrified Forest Road going into Calistoga don't see us. They don't see us. At times, when I'm already in the intersection and some dude wants to go left in his big truck, I have to honk my way through that intersection. So it's dangerous. All these people at the Rancho, not all of them are elderly, but many of them are, they too want to get across that intersection safely. This proposed building plan will make it much less safe. And again, everybody's already said it, twice a day, it's a chaos over there. It's clogged. I have seen people do it, what you mentioned. They go on the sideline, then they go into the Rancho, turn around, and then they've avoided all those people ahead of them. It's what they, I've seen it. So, no, I please, I beg you, do not approve this plan.
We have, let's see, is Gary here? Gary or Jerry? I think it's Gary? Yes.
Jerry Turgeon, 1519 Lake Street, and I want to thank the commission for your diligence in examining this application. I also want to thank those that wrote letters in opposition, as well as those that are giving compelling testimony tonight. I oppose this project. It's a chain, it's a formula business, and no matter how you package it, it's basically just a gas station and a convenience store. And these are services that we already have in our community, and I think it fails to substantiate a need or a purpose to truly serve the community. I see it solely as a mechanism to harvest profits from the community as opposed to service. And a lot of things have been addressed tonight, and I don't want to beat that drum. One of the things that I wanted to talk about is the car wash. We don't have a car wash, and it is not a full-service car wash. I have, and I urge everyone in this room, to go down to Tranqus, pay your money, drive through, and get a car wash. See what it's like. Your car will go through dirty, get wet, come out with water spots, and be dirty when it's done. I mean, that's the kind of car wash we're talking about here. It's not one where somebody will truly wash your car. There's no employees involved, it's all mechanized. Same with a robot. I mean, seriously, we need a business that'll supply jobs to the community. So, in closing, I just want to say, if granted, I won't patronize this business, I have no use for it, and I'd recommend strongly that community members not support or patronize it either. Thank you.
Thank you. Kurt?
I want to thank you all for your time, and I want to start with why you guys are here.
If you could give your name and address.
Kurt Laraku, Michael Way.
All right.
You're here for the future of this town. You have a general plan that you implement, you make sure a project is aligned to it. You also look to the future, the next one. So, my estimation of this initial study, in talking to the gentleman who signed it and did it, it was half-done. It has a lot of half-truths, it doesn't have facts, it doesn't have the elevations, it doesn't even have a drainage plan, other than the site itself. It says, "We'll start it, and the city engineer will come up with a plan later." That's unsuitable, because we have a track across the street, we have a gentleman that lives here, on Mitzi Drive, that I know back there, and the water sheets from the hill above, it runs into the church lot, and it continues, and it comes from 1,500 feet up the hill. It's called sheet runoff. This project is all paved, roofed, it's got everything but a petting zoo on it. I have to say, the project doesn't fit the site. But, the study, front page, it says here it's done at Napa, California by Metropolitan Planning Group. Well, that's even a fraud. It wasn't done, it was done in Sonoma County. The Napa County would have had all the environmental records, they would have tightened it up. Somebody wrote this up to try and make something that was palatable, thinking it would just fly through. The gentleman quit, he was only here five months, and he was given a title that I still, to this day, cannot figure out. He is the senior planner and assistant to the city manager. I didn't know we had an assistant to the city manager. The city manager doesn't wag the tail. The tail is by the planner here, Ms. Goldberg, who had nothing to do with this initial study. And I have to tell you, it has to start from scratch. In this document, it says they are going to tear off the 2003 general plan, that the traffic is horrible. We must, we own that land, we can take that land, part of it, and we have to have two lanes. We have to, one on Petrified Forest Road going to Santa Rosa, we have to have one coming in on Foothill, and that's the future of Calistoga. We cannot have a bottleneck for the visitors to come to the great town that we have. So, in short, it isn't suitable to even take it to any further than this. It has to be written up by staff that it's not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all the cards I have, so I would say this is sort of last call. Is there anyone else who would like to come up and speak?
It.
Ah, you do have cards.
Yeah.
That's not the way we do it.
There's also a hand raised in the back.
Okay. William, step up.
Yeah, William hit 159 East Chablis Circle. I've looked at that corner for many, many years, and it's embarrassing that it's an eyesore through the gateway of Calistoga. Is that a type of building we want to represent, the current structure for the City of Calistoga? I saw a gentleman go right, hit a pothole, his tire almost fell off. Come on, can I have a show of hands of how many people knew what that project was prior to 1993? It was a gas station. Nobody knows that. And the family, the Nip Family Trust, has made every effort to maintain that property, keep a good tenant in there. However, it's time to make a change on that corner because it's an eyesore. And if you're a businessperson, it's very difficult to make money on a visitor center or a country corner. You have to look at yourself as if you own that property, what would you do with it? And I know they're open to suggestions, especially with the restaurant pad. I think it's a great project, I would like to have a clean car, I'd like to see more clean cars in Calistoga, okay? And I believe the applicants are very responsive to our needs, and I would suggest you approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Matera?
My name is Frank Matera, I live at 2525 Foothill. So if you're not familiar with where that's at, that's right next door. I got a security problem over there right now with the Arco Station, and the transients, people that come across and hang out in the back of my property. We already have too many marts. We had other proposals that was a pharmacy at one time, a storage area at one time, that were shot down, but it'd probably been better than what this is. And the time, they're going to open at 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. I've got three homes on this property that I rent, so I need to consider my tenants. And until 10:00 o'clock at night, it's late. The gas station is 24 hours, and then the car wash would be right five feet from my property line. And this project doesn't show any kind of a center block wall. And also, I can't even come out of my driveway, they're talking twice a day at the commute time. I can't come out of it most of the day, with the trucks going up and down Foothill. My driveway's on Foothill Boulevard. And it's going to be a water impact, I don't care if it's recycled water or something, and we have a water problem right now. And my last thing is, oh, police activity. The Arco across the street, there's always some sort of police activity over there. The other day, I was over there, there was two sheriff's cars there, and they were questioning a person. And there's a lot of homeless over there, more and more over the years. I've been up here 38 years. And my last thing, would any of these people like to live on my property, right next door? Thank you.
Thank you. Last call. Sorry, if you could come up and give your name and address.
Ray Bolger, 2449 Foothill Boulevard, I'm a resident of the Calistoga towing property. You're absolutely right, Doug, it is a shithole. But how much money do you put on something you rent? And so, the problem is, even if we do go forward this thing, we're still going to need a tow company, we're still going to need a U-Haul service in this town, and that has never been addressed. The other problem is, is our property is a honeycomb for the law enforcement. The sheriff's poaching there, the highway patrol poaching there, and the Calistoga PD has a standing operation. That is a money hole for them. They love it because of the toes. And the more toes they, the more people they stop, the more toes I get, so I enjoy it. But the other thing is, is, you know, where they have to make, it's not an actual 90-degree turn, it's probably like 110-degree, and a large semi-truck coming out of Lake County or going to Santa Rosa, or coming up the highway, they cannot even make that turn now. So they start doing more development of that thing, it's just going to be more of a cluster. And you talk about road rage, I don't know how many times I've called the police about road rage. And then, the transients, I tow a junker car out of Arco every month, that has just been, become a derelict. So, I cannot see another gas station being more profitable or serviceable for their community when it's just going to attract more derelict cars, more derelict people, more crime, and more toes for me. So, and I started off in this town where that little, where Ace Hardware is now, it used to be day and night garage. That's where I started out in the '70s. So I've been around a while. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing. That's what the public... Do you wish to speak? Step up.
I can talk about enough about...
No, please.
I'm not prepared, but I just don't, I don't...
If you could, if you could...
I don't, my name is Susan Smith, I've lived here for about 35 years. I now live on Urbani. I lived on Franz Valley School Road, lost everything in the fire. And so now we're in town, but we, you know, we raised our children here, and I don't know how all of this works, I'm not always able to come to these kind of meetings, but how do you decide? So people come here and speak, people I know have written you letters, I have friends, people have written to the paper. How do you then decide which side that you go on? How do you decide yes or no? What all, how do you do that? For us here, I mean, we have all these people saying their ideas, we have people writing. So far, the majority of what I hear, people aren't for it. Now, that, I don't know. Well, but the ordinance, people have different ideas on that. People get up here and say on the ordinance... Right, no, 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 but there's different interpretations, is what I'm saying, right? Because you even said that, it kind of says this, so that's my question. How do you decide? You look at that, and then you listen to everybody, and do you then weigh on the side of what a majority of people want? Or how do those decisions get made? I don't know, and I don't understand it. So, that's my curious question.
Thank you. I, okay?
Yeah, my name is Kira Matthews. I've been, my family's been in the Napa Valley since 1958. I've owned a property in Calistoga consecutively for the last 15, 16 years. I live at 3043 Foothill Boulevard, just past the vet clinic before Tubbs Lane. To her point about how you make a decision here, I see a lot that's missing in your presentation, both with the developer and the architect, and your group. There's no representation of your general plan. I don't see that anywhere here. The site plans that you've provided, the setbacks aren't clear, they're too small, it's not blown up full scale, nobody can read what you passed out today, it's impossible. The 17-foot and 38-foot setback, what is that? Is that city? Is that Caltrans? Where are they? Can't see them on the site plan, it's illegible, unreadable. I don't know how anybody makes a decision on anything like this without actually, you know, a plan that you can actually read. It's not readable. You'd have to have glasses and a magnifying glass, and a lot of knowledge to see this and understand it. Most people in this room don't know what they're looking at. If you look at your first site plan page and your second site plan page, which is not numbered, I've been looking at these types of drawings for a long time, I can't determine where the setbacks are. I can't determine where the new road starts, the new lane starts, the, what's a Caltrans easement, what's not a Caltrans easement. Further to the environmental impact, that, I haven't read the report, I've talked to a few people who have read the report, and it's completely inadequate. A six-inch soil sample doesn't cut it when you've had a gas station and a wrecking yard there, with a new proposal of yet another gas station. What a great opportunity you have here to do something really great. We're going to go from gas station to wrecking yard to gas station? That's it? That's all you have to offer? I don't know, it's hard for me to, I deal with this intersection every day, I commute frequently to Santa Rosa. The Lake County traffic, I can see from my house, coming down Tubbs Lane every morning and every evening, there's a lot of traffic. The traffic, I know, has been belabored here today, but it's actually really critical because what's happening is, people are accelerating through the intersection, okay? And then they come to a screeching halt to accommodate somebody coming in or out of the Arco Station. There's only a few feet there. There's not enough room to accelerate on a four-way intersection and accommodate the parking lot and the entrance and exit to the Arco already. There's no room to go through that intersection without coming to a stop to let people go in and out already. It's really a major problem. So I would like to see you guys put together a site plan that people can actually read that is full-scale. I'd like to see a copy of the actual general map, and I'd like to see the delineated setbacks, specifically Caltrans, specifically the city ordinances, and something that's really legible to the layperson, because this isn't it. it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to come back up? Yes, please, step up.
My name is Kapish Goel. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I just thought I would try to respond to a couple of the concerns that I'd heard, obviously there were a number of them, but I think I wanted to try to address maybe just one or two. And one was the concern about the nuisance and the loitering at the Arco. So the Arco, you know, obviously, we are not an Arco, and I think we strongly feel that we are very different from them just because of the type of fuel we offer and also our offer inside of our store. So I would hope to not be judged on the way the Arco is operated. The Arco also is closed by midnight, and that actually incentivizes people to loiter where somebody can't necessarily see them. One of the advantages, and actually, for us, we don't generate a great deal of traffic during the overnight hours, because people are generally not coming to your store. But it's an opportunity for us to reset it for the next day and sort of get it cleaned up. But the inadvertent or the side effect of that is, is that there are people who are still there. So that sort of disincentivizes a lot of the loitering that you would otherwise see overnight at a closed gas station. So I do want to point that difference out, that there may be some concern about 24-hour operation, but there is certainly a benefit to having an additional three or four sets of eyes who are there to potentially deter any of that type of behavior. The second was the security robot as a part of that whole security. I had mentioned like that no one wants to be in a town like that, and I think, I'd mentioned that because we are trialing that at two locations, and it's something that we are looking into. I'm not saying for certain that we'd even have something like that here or that it would be necessary. But I brought that up because I wanted people to know that in the event that we do have something like that that's unforeseen, we do take proactive measures, we're not just sitting on the side. Last, a couple of other things. One was, there was a concern about a lot of negative Yelp reviews on our store in Napa. And I think it's tough when you have, sort of, you're looking only at one store or we're cherry picking these, because we can look at a number of other stores, right, and you see something completely different. I think what that does show, if you try to focus only on the worst or the best, it sort of skews it one way or the other. The reality is, is that any operating business is going to try its best to create a good customer experience. Sometimes you're going to be awesome at that, and sometimes you're going to have instances where you're not awesome at that, and you're going to have to make an effort to make it better. And so I just point out that for every bad review, there's ample opportunity, I'm happy to send it to Lynn, of snapshots of good reviews. And I just don't think you're going to have that Arco experience at our store. Oh, there was a lot of concern about putting something else here, whether it's a farmer's market or some other type of development. I don't know what the landowner has in mind with the property. But what I can say is, is that no matter who comes here now or in the future, they are going to have, they won't just come out of the goodness of their heart and set up like a charity shop, right? They're going to try to make it worth the effort of permitting and entitling and building. And so we think that we have, nothing's perfect, right? No plan is ever going to be perfect, no building is ever going to be perfect. But we think that, I know we're committed to making our store work and fit the neighborhood. I can tell you that for sure. I don't know whether it's going to be a screaming success or whether it's not going to be a screaming success. But I can tell you that we're committed to fitting into the community and making it work. And whether it's us or somebody else, they're not going to come in just to run a charity, they have to make the numbers work. And we think that we have an opportunity to rebuild this site, make it better, make it something different, clean it up, keep it clean, and make it financially viable. So I just wanted to point that out as well. Thank you for your time, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I, you know, we've heard a lot, let's listen to, the architect wishes to come back up. And then we'll just, you can come out and speak after that, but we are going to then close the public hearing after that.
Thank you for allowing me here again. Okay, I want to address a couple of the items that I heard tonight regarding the drainage on site. According to our civil engineer, there is zero impact from this development into the surrounding infrastructure. Okay. If the, the, the site, according to our civil engineer, and he's been coordinating with Public Works, the site is designed for the 100-year storm. If the 100-year storm happens tomorrow, this site will be flooded. The design has underground storage systems that control the discharge of the rainwater during the 100-year storm. Regarding the car wash, if we, if the residents right now wash their car at their driveways, the car wash that we're providing provide recycled water. Recycled water recycle up to approximately 90%, 80 or 90% of the water. It has a cleaning system that cleaned the water before reusing it. The first cycle of the wash will be recycled water, the fresh water will be used only the last runs before the drying. Also, I wanted to mention that, you know, all cars accumulate some contaminant underneath the vehicle. And this will not be cleaned by washing it on your driveway. When it rains, you drive on the street, all the splash of the water go underneath the car, the contaminant will be in the storm drain. If we do not have car washes like this to clean underneath the car and recycle that water and clean it. Regarding the fence around the property, I think the developer and other gas station, we put a CMU fence, that's not a big deal. Regarding the setback, we worked with the planning department since last year, and we comply with the setbacks. We submitted full-size plans. I don't see it here, but we submitted at least four sets recently.
Yes, we have, we have full-size plans.
Regarding the intersection, we want to work with the city regarding the design of the intersection and also with Caltrans. We just started the process. And the developer is offering to widen the street on both frontages. So whatever Caltrans think it is suitable for this intersection, I think the developer is, you know, willing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have one more speaker. If you could give your name.
My name is Rachel Clark, and I live in Napa at 1097 Austin Way. So it was very interesting that the applicant had said that the difference in crimes or whatever between Arco and Shell. And in fact, April 3, 2017, we had a 13-year-old girl that was picked up and raped from the Loop in Napa. And that's, you can just look it up at the Napa News website. But that's neither here nor there, it's just, that's what happens when you have a 24-hour gas station. But what I wanted to share with you is, I love Calistoga. It is quaint, it is beautiful. I was up here this past weekend, I'm looking to purchase a home here and be part of this community. I love Calistoga. And to think that you're going to open it up and have another franchise here is kind of disheartening for me. I was looking for business here and I got lost for about an hour. It's so majestic and so beautiful, and the landmarks are beautiful. And I just think you need to take that in consideration about this application. The noise that is pretty intense, especially at nighttime, having that car wash going all night, having the car alarms, having people coming and going at all hours and being respectful of the neighbors, you're having your neighbors and your people in your community that have been here for 30, 40, 50 years saying to the planning commission, please, listen to us. This is your community activated right here, saying, please, listen to us. So I hope you really take that in consideration and just remember how special this community is and what they're asking of you. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I will close the public hearing. Before we deliberate amongst ourselves, I would like to speak to the two speakers who came up relative to the documents and the plans, full-size plans and those sorts of things. We all encourage everyone to be as involved as they are willing to take the time to look things over. And at City Hall, there is available full-size plans, all of the commissioners have full-size plans, and we've had them to be able to study. All of the documents, the general plan, the urban design plan, all of those sorts of things, you can actually go online and access them through the City of Calistoga website. If you can't do that, all of those things are available at City Hall. Staff is more than willing to answer questions, point you in the right direction, and help you become as informed as you need to be on any project or really anything happening in the city. So I would just leave it there and encourage you to take advantage of that. Again, we will not be making a decision tonight, we will be continuing the hearing with guidance to staff to come back with some sort of resolution. So having said that, would either of you like to take the first shot?
Sure. One of the most important responsibilities that I have as a Calistoga planning commissioner is to set aside my personal reservations or opinions and objectively analyze the pros and cons of every application that comes in front of me and how it's applied to the general plan guidelines. So to answer your question, it's the general plan, it's the zoning codes that we use as a reference, as a bible, to make our decisions and to express our ideas. And in this case, the project clearly falls down on multiple levels. Now that being said, I recognize that many of the issues can be mitigated with time, although some of them most likely cannot. So there's a good chance that if everybody, all parties rolled up their shirt sleeves and dug into this over time, that there could come to a consensus that would meet the guidelines. I wanted to call your attention to page four. Character area overlays. The project site is subject to the petrified forest gateway character area overlay. Guidance for development and/or redevelopment of this area is necessary to ensure that the values and the vision of the community are realized and that Calistoga identity as a unique historic small town is preserved. That word stands out to me, that's the community. That is you, that is us. That's not always the city or the planning commission or the city council, it is us and the community. And there appears to be a pretty resounding consensus from my fellow Calistogan residents that this is not something that should be supported. And that is, at this moment in time, my perspective, but I'll listen to my fellow planning commissioners and see what they have to say.
Well, I want to start by saying that I am in favor of a nice car wash in Calistoga. I'm in favor of traffic improvements at this intersection. I'm also in favor of beautifying the gateways to our town. Those things all sound great to me. I'm thrilled that all of you are here, really pleased with so much participation on this project, it's unusual for us. And since you're all here, I wanted to take a brief detour and echo some of the comments that the other commissioners have made. I hear a lot of, on any general project that we review, you should say no because I don't want that. Or you should say no because we don't need that. And I just wanted to explain how I view my role as a planning commissioner. I'm here to comment on the appropriateness of projects, to review them for compliance with all of the existing guidelines that Scott referenced, and to hold high design standards for our town. And that's what I'm reviewing, any project that comes across our desk. It's the property owner who decides what they want to pursue, what they feel this town needs, and what type of business they're going to propose based on what excites them and what they feel will be successful. So they're the ones that bring the projects and we review them against all the appropriate standards that have been decided by our community. Something else I wanted to point out is that our planning department does a really good job of filtering and reviewing and going through every single project. And that all of you are welcome to sign up online to receive copies of these documents, including all of the reports. They're all available online. And you can get them emailed to you ahead of every meeting so that you can read them. If you need larger plans, go view them and then participate as you see fit. Our meetings are on television, they're on YouTube, and so it's really great that everyone's here. Back to the project?
Yes, please.
Okay. So I think that the list of concerns that the planning department has identified in this packet is accurate and spot on. I agree with all the recommendations on pages eight, 10, and 11. And I think they're all really important. I appreciate that what the Loop brand is trying to do, it's something different, they're trying to create and offer a higher-end experience for your average gas station and convenience store. A version of this project could be really well done, but it requires significant revisions to get there. And possibly a reduction in the overall scale, it just might not be possible given all the constraints that they feel is necessary to make it successful. So that's my perspective on the project, is this version that we have been presented with is not appropriate without significant revisions.
In terms of guidance that we give staff, is it your view that we should try to advise staff to pursue a revision or not?
There's a good list put together on page eight, an important item on page 10, and a really important one on page 11, that's the parking at the restaurant and the elevated standards for quality of design. And if the applicant feels they can address all of these issues and still make their brand work, they do have a formula, if they feel like they can do that and they want to come back, I'm open to reviewing their updated project. That's up to them.
Okay.
If they feel they can accomplish all of that.
All right. Thank you. I would like to probably go through some issues relative, specific to the general plan and the overlays. And really, that's where I'm trying to draw guidance and not be concentrating on specific issues of the site or the architecture or anything like that. I think that, I think that the general plan issues are sort of all-encompassing enough to give us a direction on which to go. And if you bear with me, what I'm trying to do is really answer the questions that are asked of us in the general plan of whether this proposed project responds to those or they don't. I'll start with just a very brief, and I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, but a brief talk. The general plan does talk about formula businesses and chains. And I, it is clear that the business owner has made a compelling case that they own a chain. And the, the general plan as we have it, in P.1.1-1 says, "Formula businesses within the city limits shall generally be prohibited. Exceptions may be made for formula businesses primarily meeting local residents and business owners' needs." And it goes on to say, section P.1.2-9, "Formula visitor accommodations and restaurants shall be prohibited in..." shall be prohibited in Calistoga. Other formula businesses and chains..." And this is my point, "Stores may be allowed but shall reflect Calistoga's unique small-town qualities and shall not include common design elements found in other communities." So does this proposal meet that standard?[716.51][716.51](LAUGHTER) I don't believe that it does. The next area I'd like to talk about really is, in the general plan, we do have overlays that apply to specific areas of the city. Some of these, it was referenced earlier about the urban design plan, and some of these were outgrowths, the results of the urban design plan, and have been incorporated into the general plan. And as we look at what they say, and as we have looked at this proposal and the design, we also have to be cognizant that the environmental initial study that was prepared specifically says, relative to aesthetics, that the Foothill Boulevard and Petrified Forest Road are designated scenic corridors and are located within an entry corridor overlay area due to the location of the proposed project within a designated scenic corridor and entry corridor overlay. The project will be held to an elevated standard of quality of design landscaping and screening. So I say that as a preface that that is our task, because that is what has been stipulated in the environmental document. The land use element in the general plan, and I will just take a minute and look at this, and we're going to talk about just consistency with the general plan. "The proposed retail, restaurant, service, commercial, and service station uses would be considered consistent with this designation if it is determined that they conform to the relevant general plan policies that we'll talk about." There are gateway overlay designations that are applied to three areas in the city. The land use element describes the Petrified Forest Gateway as a country crossroads. This gateway overlay stipulates the following, and we'll see, and I will characterize whether I think that this meets that threshold. "The character of the area should be of understated visual appearance and provide a preview of the community's unique qualities." I don't think it makes that. Number 2. "The scale of new development or redevelopment must not overpower the surrounding neighborhoods and should be understated using small-scale and low-rise building design." I don't think it makes that. Number 3. "The approach to town from a rural setting must convey a sense of arrival and signify the characteristics of a unique, small, visitor-friendly town." I don't think that it's that unique, and I'm talking about the project. Number 4. "Building massing form and layout must convey a diverse village character and reflect Calistoga's individualistic nature." I will say that this gas station, like almost every gas station that we have now in the United States, is built on a template and is reliably recognizable by anyone in any state when they're traveling. And this stays with that model, and it would probably be something that we would need to move drastically away from. Number 5. "Landscaping should convey a rural, rather than manicured, urban setting." Because of the requirements of all of the traffic movements around a gas station at this location, the sightlines coming in and out of the gas station pretty much overrule any kind of intense landscaping, because you must maintain sightlines so that you can really only have growth that is up to 3 or 4 feet or jumps all the way up to above 7 feet. And so we really don't even have the opportunity to fulfill that general plan requirement. Number 6. "Parking should be screened from street view and placed at the rear of the property while buildings should be placed in close proximity to the road." Well, it clearly does not do that. Number 7. "Uniform setbacks, heights, roof forms, and architectural language should be avoided so that the appearance of a large development is that of one of which was built over time." That, those seven items are dealing with the gateway overlay of the general plan, and I can't find really agreement in fulfilling those aspirations in the project as it's currently designed. The project site is also located in the Up Valley Foothill Boulevard Entry Corridor Overlay. So this is a secondary overlay, but also applies to this particular piece of property. And there are two items on that. Number 1. "Setbacks shall be wide in order to preserve rural characteristics and shall be landscaped with trees, vineyards, and/or native vegetation." That is not being presented. Number 2. "New buildings should reflect small-scale, low-rise design characteristics with an understated visual appearance and should maintain existing small-town, rural, and open-space qualities." Parking should not be visible from the entry corridor roadway. I feel also that it does not fulfill that. Then in the general plan's open space and conservation element, it identifies six scenic corridors in the Calistoga general plan area. This project site is in two of those scenic corridors, two of the six. In Policy P.5.1-1, it requires that development safeguards scenic vistas and gateways and maintains a rural, small-town character of these roadways. It includes the following strategies to accomplish this. To complement setbacks and screening from roadways, to push things back, or to limit and prohibit certain types of development, particularly that with a big box or strip mall commercial character. And this, I think, is sort of bridging towards that. So my general take on all of this is really, again, measured by what I, as I read the general plan, and I think that as such a critical site, this design does not fulfill that. I will say, in cooperation with Commissioner McNair, that in an ideal world, I think that a gas station could be made to work on that site, and it would, and it could actually enhance the gateway mystique of Calistoga. And the reason I say that is that, as I said a minute ago, gas stations have become so completely ubiquitous in their look. It doesn't matter if it's Shell, or 76, or anybody else, they pretty much all look the same. They have a template for a convenience store, a template for the canopy over the gas, and pretty much everything is already in template form, and you get a site and you move the templates around. So if a design were created that would throw all of those things to the wind and actually made something completely unique, then that actually could be something that would be a benefit to Calistoga. Other cities also do regulate how gas stations are laid out. I know in the city of Irvine in Southern California, everything is required to be reversed. The canopy with all of the gas movement and traffic movement and all of the parking has to be located at the rear of the property, and the building, the back of the building is what faces the street with usually substantial landscaping between that, and you really don't know it's a gas station, other than the fact that it'll, there'll be a sign that says Shell, or 76, or something like that. So there certainly are existing viable business models that respond to those issues, and they're out there. But as it stands and as I read the general plan, and given that we need to give staff guidance of how to come back to this, I appreciate that this project could basically start with a white sheet of paper and come back.
Exactly.
And given what we have before us, if we have a consensus of the commission, my take on it would be to recommend a continuance of the project for staff to write a resolution of denial, and if there's something better to come back, do it as a secondary submittal, because it really would require a clean sheet of paper. So is that, can I, is that a consensus that we have, Scott?
Yes.
Because if that is the case, I would make a motion that the hearing be continued to the next scheduled hearing and that staff prepare a motion for denial of this project and using guideline, guidance from some of the statements we've made here tonight. Do I have a second?
Second.
A roll call?
Commissioner Cooper.
I concur with Commissioner...
Commissioner McNair.
I agree.
Vice Chair Willock.
Yes. Okay. We are continued to, two weeks from tonight. And we will take it from there.[1464.15][1464.15](APPLAUSE).
I think the meeting is over.
Yeah.
Only once. In 14 minutes.[1486.83][1486.83](LAUGHTER). Well, aren't they bringing that to the planning commission? Or the city council? Okay.
The hearing is not over yet. We're not done.
They don't know that.
Yeah, they don't know that. If we could, our meeting is not over yet, so if you could step outside, you can all, you can talk all you want.[1536.48][1536.48](APPLAUSE). Okay. Lynn, oh, well, I was going to say, so we have matters initiated by commissioners. Do we have, Scott?
I would like to go on record that it would be fantastic if we found a solution to stop the constant fires at Clover Flat. I know it's not within the city of Calistoga, but it's obviously within the county of Napa, and this has got to stop. It's number four for the year, and it's only a matter of time before it's to get out of hand.
Yeah, I think that Mayor Canion, last night at the city council hearing, gave a very compelling statement about that, and they are, in fact, the board that governs that are meeting with the owners of that, and some punitive action is going to take place. So I would, yeah, suggest, maybe you go back and look at that section of the city council hearing.
Yeah.
Nothing tonight.
Nothing? Okay. I would like, I have a suggestion, Lynn, that I would like to perhaps pursue, that I think could be fairly abbreviated, would not cost you much time or money, but as the apartment project that we approved on Washington at the last meeting goes forward and ultimately gets, we're going to say it gets built, it would be, it would be very interesting to do, to do a post-analysis study of some specific areas that I think that we could do and would give us guidance when these projects come forward of what do we propose, or what is being proposed will be, will happen, and what actually happens. So it would be interesting, after this is built, to find out. Are there bedrooms, separate bedrooms being rented to have however many people in, or 13 cars instead of eight, and all of these sorts of things? And I think that it would be an easy survey. I think it could be simplified.
He's volunteering to do it, I think.
And I am, and I am probably volunteering to do it. I'm probably volunteering to do it. But I think it could be helpful, because we get into these things and we can't really answer some things in terms of what has happened. So I'm just laying that out on the table, and that's...
Do you clarify what kind of projects? Are you talking about multifamily projects?
In this case, I am only talking about that specific project.
Oh, I can pledge to that, because I'm retiring in one year and nine months.
Thank you. Howard? All right, Director's Report.
Don't cancel the next meeting. We have three items. So please show up. Yes, we are very busy. So we'll have the Cyberlik Building retrofit, seismic retrofit, and the continuance of this one, and also the Craftsman in expansion will be back before you because their entitlements expired.
Oh, no.
Yes, unfortunately.
Couldn't they get an extension?
I gave them an extension, so it's been, it'll be two years in a couple of weeks, and that's what the ordinance, the code provides for.
All right.
So unfortunately, they didn't pull building permits soon enough.
Okay.
Hopefully it'll be short.
All right. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
移到
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right.